Sorry, and Kelly didn't want to issue will not be joining this meeting. And we're going to call this meeting to order at seven oh four. Anyone have anything you need to add or change to the agenda?
I would like to just do a that they have a resolution so I can submit it to the National School for the Association for both Dresden and Hanover.
What happened with the address?
She passed.
Can you remind me what happened with that address?
It passed.
Okay, all right, yeah. You don't have to be responsible. Find out to get them. Right, thanks. Does any other adjustments to the agenda for me? We're seeing none, we'll move on to a public comment. Anyone in the public on Zoom or in person wishes to address us on something not related to public topics, please come up right now. Come on over. If you could say your name, where you live, and if you're representing any particular group.
While I'm not the only member of the public here. So I'm Yolanda Baumgartner, I have a handover this year, and I am a part of Sustained Handover. So the reason I'm here is that I read a press release from the EPA saying that Hanover had been awarded funding for free clean buses, which is very, very exciting. So I think all of our New Hampshire delegation have all released press releases on this. But all I know is that it's, I think, six hundred thousand dollars. All they said, and three still left. So I wanted to come first to say congratulations. And somebody did a lot of work and is as yet an unsung hero, I think, in our community. So congratulations. I was kind of hoping it would be on the agenda because I'd like to know more about it. If you could make a little room to talk about it, that would be great, or kind of let me know how we can learn more because I'm sure there's a lot of work between getting the grant announcement and actually making it happen. So thank you for getting it this far, and if there's anything our group can help, because I know there's a ton of work. And I'm really glad that the bus company, I think you call them STA, they seem to finally be getting into this because I know last year they got, they, with Henter, I think, there was an award there and they're associated with it. So I'm hoping that they'll have at least worked out some of the early bugs, and you're not the first early adopters. But so anyway, I'll stop here and thank you very much.
Yeah, so Jay, what else is something to say about that? It was discussed earlier.
Yeah. They had some better indulgence to actually engage with the public, please, please. And so Yolanda, thank you. But we had our first meeting, we found out about this like everybody else did, did press. And we have our first scheduled meeting to find out what we have to do in order to get them. They, right now have said that they've said there are recipients and then there are closed recipients, and I'm not even sure what our status is that way. All I know is we've been allocated enough for three buses. We don't know any particulars like how it works when we have a contracted service provider like STA versus whether we just get three buses. So we'll find that out tomorrow, and then once we know some details, we'll be able to then fully inform the public. And I'll be preparing an end of year newsletter tomorrow as well, and I plan to feature that. We had a joint meeting, which may or may not be relevant to your your statement and your question, but we had a joint meeting with our Hanover High Environmental Club and our Ray School Environmental Club and our Marion Cross Environmental Club, where students came in on Sunday, June 2nd, which is when I'd seen the press release and asked it to that group then, and they were ecstatic. So that's one of their big goals. So I echo your gratitude to the folks that made this possible for us, but we're going to learn more.
Any other comments from anyone else on Zoom or in the room? Seeing none, we will move right along then to principals report. Lauren, I hear you have some things to talk about.
I do, but I would, I'd like to cede the majority of my time to talk about the handbook as well as the family survey. So just to honor everyone's time, hopefully you've had the opportunity to take a look at all of the initiatives and priorities that we had this year, some of the positive steps that we took to make progress, and then some continued steps that we'll be taking next year in these initiative and priority areas. As I was writing this, I just felt very proud of all of the work that was happening in addition to just the daily things that happen every day in the school. So I ended with just sharing appreciation with you all, with the community, and with our teachers as we look forward to another great year next year, and be happy to answer any specific questions that people have.
Thank you for that, Lauren. Any questions for us this time?
Yeah, so enrollment can, I mean, I see like this is as of June, right? But as far as kind of what have you been seeing is kind of coming in, I think the last time you gave a report, it was like trending higher than the prior years kindergarten class, which we know is extremely small. So I just kind of, are we on track for that? I'm just trying to think of.
We are, yeah. Yes, we are. So according to the projected enrollment that we had for kindergarten for this incoming year, we're only too short of the projected enrollment. So we've projected correctly for kindergarten coming in. Everything else looks pretty steady. So our projected enrollment of, I think, four hundred forty for next year looks to be a pretty solid number.
I've heard stories that the monastery ever school is not coming back. Anything you need to know about there?
Happy to chime in. We ran it as a pilot last year. We ran into space issues and we were assured this year by CAS that they could accommodate the need. We could not figure out a way to make it work within the space that we have. So we learned the pilot not sustainable at this time.
There were some pretty clear restrictions about how the programs couldn't interact, and essentially it's that they couldn't interact. And it was based on IMS's licensure and their ability to operate at our school. So the programs couldn't share any spaces and the program directors couldn't interact with like the CAS students and the CAS directors. That was not what we thought was going to be the plan that was originally rolled out when we were thinking about this pilot. And it made it quite clear that there just wasn't enough space for both of those programs to exist within the school completely separately. And then also knowing that CAS would be able to accommodate all of the families and fill that need. We were comfortable. Exciting.
If you can come from the principal's report specifically, if you want. Anyone in the public want to add something to the question for Lauren? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Thank you, Lauren, as always, too.
Did, did I approach, like, saying that they'd be able to fill the need for next year? I know that they are, the town is looking to do more at the age level, kind of as a pilot for themselves. And I know that they at least stopped at the select board meeting, that they would be kind of the new staff to support some of those programs, and I just didn't know if any of that. Like they were offered, like our assumption that they would have enough staff is still valid. I guess I just wanted to make sure we say goodbye prematurely. I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, everything might
I think there's, there's a lot of moving pieces too, because kindergarten, I'm not sure what they are projecting for enrollment in our school. I kind of only know what I know when they tell me what they know, because even though it feels like it's a school program, it's not ours. It's not ours. So we know what we know and we know it. And I, we give them as much information as we can when we have it. And so at this point, though, we're operating under the understanding and the belief that they'll be able to staff what they were going to be staff.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other questions? All right, let's move right along to the reading of policy and business requiring discussion. These are all second readings that have already been discussed at SAU and Address, and then we've all been through the board. Any other comments on these four? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the family handbook changes. Lauren, you want to walk us through what's changing?
Sure, there are two documents. One is the actual handbook, and then one is the key handbook changes and updates. So if you open the key handbook changes and updates, you're going to notice that there weren't many major changes. So we added the mission and vision statements because they weren't finalized and ready to go last time around. We, per grade fours' request, we updated their homework expectations. Just a note that we may need to update the food and school section this summer because we're not sure if prices are going to change. And then we'll need to update the progress report schedule based on term dates. Did update the school calendar and did update key contacts with the note that we'll need to add some email addresses for staff members that were onboarding over the summer. Other than that, things remain very unchanged.
What is the homework change for the proprietors?
Do you want me to read last year's? So if you look, if you look in the handbook attachment, you'll see what it is now, but I can pull up last year's if that's what you're asking, like a comparison aside.
Yes.
Give me one moment.
Thank you for that. While Lauren's pulling that up, any other questions or comments on the changes? Kim?
Yeah, just to clarify, the food changes as well, kind of a similar question.
Was anything besides pricing?
Yeah, nothing was changed yet.
Okay.
So what's in there was what was in the 2023 handbook, but it may need to be updated if those changes are made.
I guess I was looking ahead at some of the survey data, and so I just wanted, if there was any.
Nothing was. Well, remember the survey just closed on Friday, so we have not done a lot of action and had those discussions yet.
You haven't changed it yet, come on. It's been three businesses.
Working on it. It was helpful though to get that feedback, and yes, we'll get to it.
Prices change, right? Offerings could change.
Okay, so last year it said for fourth grade, there will be regular homework Monday through Thursday and occasionally on weekends for projects. Homework could be in all of the content areas with reinforcement of math facts, a regular area of endeavor. Children are expected to read and/or be read to on a regular basis. So that's what it said last year. So if you're looking at this year's handbook, I can pull that up, but you can find the homework change there in next grade four.
I can do it, and we'll do it. It's on page nine. Fourth grade students will read for thirty minutes and practice math backs for ten minutes approximately four days per week. Students will also have two book projects to complete.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for finding her. Any other comments? Seeing none, continue talking. Review of the financials. I know Jamie is not with us today. She is on a well-deserved vacation. Does anyone have any comments that Jay can help with, or Jay, anything that we need to focus on today?
She put a little narrative in the public area, and I really can't add much beyond what she wrote.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? For Jay, for next year, are we all comfortable waiting until the next session is available? It might not be till August. In terms of our scheduled meetings, not her available. I see none, we'll move right along. We need to appoint a new accounts payable person. This is the quarterly thing that I think is currently Devin Marcella. Any volunteers? Kelly's not here, so I'm happy to volunteer her.
Good. Kelly and I did it the prior time, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So Kelly, can we get a swish?
No, I heard Ben in there.
All right, Ben and Tara will do it. So we'll put that in for the notes. Happened to do it. How would the parents survey results? So like I said, the email they're, this is just from a survey that closed on Friday, so hats off to Lauren. We're getting this to us incredibly fast time. So thank you for that. There's a lot of information here. Lauren, you want to walk us through probably just the visuals?
Sure. So we didn't make too many changes from last year to this year, exception being that we added a couple of open response questions to get some specific feedback about a few things, which we'll get to in just a moment. As you go through the family survey results, you see that it's a pretty representative group of results from all grade levels when we start out. You know, fewer in kindergarten and second grade, but across the board, you know, we got folks to answer response questions at a pretty great rate across all grade levels. Overall, the, I think the feedback that we see is pretty positive. It was organized in a few sections, so school climate questions and responses came first. And those were questions two all the way through nine. When we get to question number ten, you know, we started to talk about curriculum program and resource that had to do with DEI, so the diversity of students backgrounds and learning needs. And the opportunity for folks to clarify or share a little bit more in question eleven about school climate. I believe you'll have access to some of the open response questions, but thematically, I will share with you that some of the takeaways included encouragement for us to be thoughtful and continue our education around bullying, including discussions about respect, anti-bullying lessons, and lessons for students around navigating tricky social interactions. We do have our current affective education program, but we're always trying to figure out if that's meeting the needs of our students. So taking a look at that and making sure that we're infusing specific things around bullying and tricky social interactions and anti-bullying into those lessons. And then also, because we have that robust program, making sure that we're educating the community about what we're teaching and when we're teaching it. And then some positives around the supports, the climate of support, the climate of community, and the welcoming climate that we have here. Just continuing to make sure that all folks feel welcome. So we had a variety of responses, many positive. But we also need to take into account that there are a few folks that answered that they don't particularly feel welcome. So we need to figure out what that's about and address that. And then just overall, in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, being thoughtful that students have access points in their education and in social discussions. And it just made me think about now that we have the mission statement and the vision statement, how can we make sure that we're living and enacting what we say that we're trying to do or doing here at Ray, so nurturing an inclusive environment? The next section, do you want me to pause there and just go section by section? Would that be helpful, or do the overall and then circle back?
Any more questions yet, or should you wait? You're good to go.
The next section was on classroom and learning. Again, lots of, you know, positive answers here. But you can see that in this section, as compared to the climate section, we have a few more disagrees. If you look at, just to kind of orient yourself, if you look at thirteen, so staff members at the Ray School set academic expectations that are developmentally appropriate for my student. You know, when I looked at this, and I'm just looking at the colors, I'm like, whoa, there's a lot more green there. But just so you know, what this particular graph represents is that seventy strongly agree, seventy agree. Nine answered neither agree nor disagree. And that green right there is nine people. So it looks significant, and just because we didn't see as much green in the other section, but nine is disagree, and then strongly disagree. That purple there is, is two folks answered it that way. So just acknowledging that we need to be looking at our academic expectations. This is something that we were thinking about in the strategic plan as well. There were lots of questions and mentions around rigor. And so this got me, you know, a good survey often will get you asking even more questions. So I'm wondering what in some of the open response feedback too was like, what should be set as academic expectations? And how do we make sure to communicate those to our parents so that they can answer question thirteen in a way that they feel really secure about? Because some parents said, we're not really actually sure what's developmentally appropriate because we're not the teachers. So we'd love to hear more about that. And then homework. We talk about homework every year. So I put an open-ended response question about homework to see what we could get out of that. Just like really interesting. So seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen were all about homework, and you can just see we're kind of all over the board. So some folks feel like the homework does help their student learn, and then there are folks that say, no, it's not particularly helpful. I was pleased to see that of those that responded, nobody answered that their student was doing forty to sixty minutes of homework or more than an hour of homework at the elementary level. Ninety-seven on question eighteen, ninety-seven responses said that the student doesn't have regularly assigned homework. And then forty-six respondents said up to twenty minutes, fourteen said twenty to forty minutes. And then about the amount of homework being assigned, again, kind of all over the board. So fifty folks said there should be more homework. Sixty-one said it's just right. Ten said less homework, and thirty-six said we don't want any homework at all. In the open response for classroom and learning, so the actual question twenty, again, just comments about homework, some saying they want more, some saying they want none, some saying that they wanted less. And then there was a comment in there from a parent that said, you know, I've been doing research, and the research seems to suggest that unless it's really differentiated, that it's not a useful exercise. So something for ours would consider. And then there were many comments that suggested we look for opportunities for enrichment and challenge, and then also an acknowledgement around, and appreciation around specials, the interventionist, and general appreciations for teachers in the area of classroom and learning.
Kim?
This might be a really hard question, and that's, but you talk with teachers all the time, I guess. Would you expect this response about homework? Because it is kind of, there's a distribution of responses.
Yes.
Would you say that teachers would have a similar distribution, or would you think that teachers are leaning more toward one way or the other on average?
For what particular amount of time?
The, like, yeah, just, I think the greater, the amount of homework, I think maybe, you know, having homework at all in the lower grade, you know, that's.
Yes.
So just, sure. Would you say that it's different than how parents are thinking about it, or do you think it's?
I think it's similar. I think what, I know that what teachers are assigning, it should come out to like twenty to forty minutes or none at all because we actually don't assign homework in kindergarten through first grade especially. So I would expect to see that there are a group of students that aren't getting homework. We've moved away from nightly homework overall across all grade levels with an emphasis on, you know, read at home, be with your family at home, take care of yourself, you know, physically, mentally, get some sleep, you know, go to your practices. Don't spend your time, all of your time on homework. At this point, I would say that we consider homework more about like the routine of doing things in the evenings, of prioritizing your time, time management, some more of the executive function skills versus I'm going home to practice and make sure that I've mastered a concept from class. Teachers would prefer that that type of activity happen in the classroom where they can get real-time feedback, where they can be instructed in the way that we're trying to instruct students, and where parents are not like the factor that determines whether a student is successful in their home country. So this actually, it didn't surprise me, and I was pleased to see that students, most students aren't getting more than twenty to forty minutes of homework on a daily basis.
It seems to me that, I read through all of the responses.
Yes.
And elsewhere there, you know, people say the emails aren't half helpful. When is stuff, you should point it out to us more. Communication, but it it strikes me that maybe having conversations at the beginning of the year, very specifically from you to parents about homework and the merits and the challenges and the really specific decisions that the school has made might help set aside some of this questioning. I'm sure for some parents, it's anxiety too and concern, my child's going to fall behind.
Yes.
And I, I also just finished reading the book that Jay brought an excerpt to our school board retreat. And I, I would highly encourage parents, regardless of the age of their children, to consider reading Never Enough by Jennifer Wallace. The subtitle is When Achievement Culture Becomes Toxic and What We Can Do About It. And in the book, she references super zips, which are zip codes with particular demands and expectations in college preparation on part of parents, which we are. I mean, we have to be a super zip. I just think it would be really helpful for parents to maybe find a couple of friends and read them together and talk about it.
Yeah, I'm already imagining that could be a community event too. What did we get to in just a second, like suggestions around bringing your community together? So yeah, thanks for that recommendation. And to your point, the homework philosophy, I feel like is something that I, that the networks committee in the administration, so again, networks committee is the advisory committee to the administration, is a representative from every grade level and team that attends these meetings. And we seem to always like have a conversation about homework and then, and then sort of put it off for right now, because also a decision that we make at the elementary school level can impact what happens at the middle school level, can impact what happens at the high school level. So I'm thinking about leadership conversations that we can have, so sort of like K-12 philosophy around homework. But in the meantime, yes, thinking about the school homework philosophy, the rationale behind the homework philosophy. And then also just noting too, that when parents come to the curriculum nights and the open houses, there's always in every classroom a slide about like what to expect about homework. So teachers do try to communicate that. But there are strong feelings about homework, even considering like the way that we grew up. Even when I was at school, homework was a thing. You did it every night, and there was a lot of it, right? So this is a bit of a change too in how we're approaching this.
One thing we've had a lot that we've seen from the other schools when you had the survey discussions is parents generally wishing that again, they're not worried what the content is, but more that there's sort of some little baby steps to more homework. It's kind of like, you know, you're at this at Ray School, then middle school, then high school.
Right.
Kind of a nice slope, if you will.
Yeah.
And that's always interesting here for the time through day.
Yes.
I think another thing that I consider too is sort of what people think of as homework may differ, like in terms of how homework is deployed.
Sure.
And for me, as a parent of a fifth grader and first grader, my first grader, by my definition, has homework every night in the sense that we're told to read books.
Yes.
But other parents may not think of that as homework, per se.
Yes.
No checking on you, no one's grading you, but it is, at least my interpretation of it is that's a daily expectation. So that could be sort of a variation on the list.
Good point, yeah.
Any other comments before Lauren?
All right, let's carry on. Communication. So in this section, you'll find there's some more appreciations around the types of communications that are happening. I'll get to this more when I talk about the open-ended responses. You know, there were some concerns about timely communication, not a ton. So again, looking at twenty-three, five people disagreed with the statement and one strongly disagreed. So you see the green there, but we're, we're looking at one hundred and fifty-seven respondents. But let's, let's figure out what that's about. We want these communications to be timely and helpful because we are a team. Rays of sunshine, always tricky to meet everybody's needs there. And so we'll just continue to work on Rays of Sunshine as a place where not only the most important news is being shared, but also celebrations. And then I'm kind of dipping into some of the open-ended responses, but there were some requests from some respondents that there be like more of a personalized touch also in Rays of Sunshine, and, and some folks that wanted to hear more from me. And so one, I want to make sure that I am open and transparent with my communications. And so you're thinking about a small paragraph, the beginning of Rays of Sunshine, but not necessarily the essays that I used to write. It would take me about three hours to write on, you know, on a weekend, because I don't want to use that time during the school week. I want to be out and about, you know, with the students and with my staff. So I'm not going to sit behind a closed door and write and then edit a paragraph. So that was typically happening on the weekends. So finding a balance between like personalized paragraphs, making sure that I'm showing leadership in the school, expressing my beliefs around our goals and how we're moving forward, and making sure that people feel like they know me. Sometimes around the school, students call me things that aren't actually like my name or my title. For instance, I'm known as Miss President in one of the classrooms. So as I read through some of the open-ended responses, they were like, my child does not know who the principal is. I'm wondering if they know who the president is. Or, or, you know, they, they know who the helper in the front office is, but maybe not the principal. So, you know, just, just thinking about ways that I can continue to be, you know, like a face at the forefront of communication and just be you know, in the public eye so that people know who I am, know what I stand for, and feel like they can trust me. So a little bit more, so more proactive and early communication in a timely manner, both from staff and administrators. We heard some feedback about desire to hear. We heard some feedback um about, you know, desire to hear more from me. There was a specific comment that said they hadn't heard from me all all year, like not at all. And I was wondering if maybe they they blocked me, like I'm in their spam folder somewhere. So I have to make sure that um, you know, everybody knows how to how to get emails from me. Um, and then there was also in in the open um comment section appreciation for just general communication. So as much as we had some, you know, feedback that was that suggested we make some changes, there was also just appreciation, as you see in the pie charts, um, for the way that they communicate. What can I answer about communication?
Communication, good.
Okay, all right, then we'll move on. So open-ended uh feedback questions. The first one I asked was, we're completing year two of illustrative math.
Oh, actually, no, it's it's about that.
Um, and then I would, we would appreciate any feedback as we move into year three. And um, you know, feedback was anywhere from, I don't know what you're talking about, which was important feedback, and what is I A, right? What is illustrated math, um, all the way up to, you know, strong positives like love, fantastic, great, we support this. Um, also to, you know, questions around um fact fluency and the ability to, for children to have more rigor, more challenge and more differentiation within the program. Um, overall, the the feedback was uh more positive than it was um negative, which was good to hear. So I'm excited to say that we have already identified that fact fluency is an area of weakness for the program and we're thinking about how we can incorporate that um into the program next year. And then also, um, there are so many access points that are built into I M, but just like any curriculum or any curriculum resource, there is a ton. So as we're learning how to best use I M, um, I think that we're also learning, okay, here are the basic things and now I can also work on this. I can work on the challenge problems. Okay, and now I can also really think about differentiation. And our schedule for next year that we're working on is going to support a what I need block where this full differentiation um challenge as well as enrichment and support can be something that's really targeted across a grade with a lot of folks pushing it at the same time. What can I answer about feedback for math?
Yeah, so uh it was about like the multiplication tables and if if when you're saying fact fluency, if that's what you're talking about.
Okay, yes.
Um, yeah, just I I wanna, I guess maybe underscore that if we're acknowledging that it might be a weakness because um last year, um, I looked at that House Bill one seventy, which is what was signed into law last year that requires teaching multiplication tables and cursing. Um, and so I just, by the end of, you know, fifth grade, so I just want to make sure that like it's not just bottom-up feedback, right? It's trying to sort of make you.
Yes. Yeah, fifth grade is using something called um multiplication by heart as a resource in the classroom. It supports the learning of fact fluency in the area of multiplication and then it leads into division as well. Um, and yes, looking at how we can best be meeting the the House Bill requirements.
Thank you.
Yes.
There was a board member reached out quite earlier today with whether we had concerns that, as I recall, when we look at the statewide assessments, um, a month or so ago, that there was a ever so slight tick downward in math. Very subtle, so it might be all of this statistical noise, but there was concern whether that is associated with using illustrative math.
So that, what that data would have represented was um year year one, our very first year. I don't think we have enough um, enough and ability to say that there is like a correlation or causation that's happening here.
Great.
Okay, let's go. Progress reports. Um, people love personalized paragraphs and the comment sections, really appreciate conferences. Would like to see more consistency and clarification around the grading system. So we use a one, two, three scale and it seems to be uh confusing and perhaps not used consistently across grade levels. So that was helpful information. Um, as some folks said, this is great. Don't do too much. Don't get too fancy. Um, you know, and some people said, yeah, if you're gonna do it, then do it because right now it's fun. Um, overall, I would say that people just want data. They they really want specifics about how their student is doing. Um, so we're thinking next year about uh what reports we can be generating and sending home in addition to the progress reports um that will share specific data about a student um on a norm scale as well. So uh like different uh scores. Um, we're using something called MAPS or Nulia in grades three through five. So how can we share additional data that will help parents feel informed about where how their student is performing, both themselves, but then compared to peers in norm or classification? Um, and then uh encouragement to look at the specials and and Spanish section of the progress report. And so folks mentioned that it's not usually particularly personalized and and that is true. And that has not been the purpose of um the specials progress report. If there's something that is particularly lit- particularly stands out about a student or an area of support for a student, then there usually is an additional personalized comment, but typically um it is sort of a plugged in update about what's been happening within specials. Um, so folks wanted more personalized information from specials and Spanish teachers. And I would just add that, um, you know, a classroom teacher has to do approximately twenty of these for their own class, but a specials or a Spanish teacher is going to be doing four hundred and forty of them. So asking a specials or a Spanish teacher to do four hundred and forty very personalized progress reports is something that we would have to consider the feasibility. So um acknowledging that perhaps it's not meeting a need. But also the flip side of it, asking for very personalized progress reports for four hundred and forty students may also not be the most feasible thing. Um, we'll be having a conversation to see what makes the most sense as we move into progress report revisions in the future. And always open to suggestions. Any comments or questions about progress?
Really just two sides of me because I, yes, they are generalized, but they also are kind of the only way that we kind of get a glimpse, and I I'm using this word very loosely, but into the curriculum or what's being taught during that. So it it is informative, yet not personalized. And so, you know, and if there was a better way to get that information, you know.
Like the rays of sunshine or the classroom newsletter?
Yeah, maybe like a a curriculum, you know, I just. But but other than that, I really don't know how else to, without talking to somebody, access that information.
Sure.
It almost seems like maybe a weekly or monthly like paragraph that's sent to the teachers that they can send to like, you know, first graders did a paragraph that the first graders then input into their personal emails. Um, that here's what Spanish people in their Spanish class at the last mark is what you're getting.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to suggest that with the progress for for work could be a narrative that is written once more than a number, but that comes from the specials and says, over the course of the last two weeks. It it already does that.
Yeah, that's what it is. But people are feeling like it, this is just an update of what's happened, not an update about what my student is doing in.
Got it.
What a special, yes.
I was gonna say the same thing and I I maybe it's just, I don't know if you still remember where it was, my case. It shows up in the same lines, you know, block as the actual individualized progress report. So you draw it out and it's not a progress report, you know, it's just a narrative separate sheet that says in the email and whatever. This was done so people don't expect it to be.
Good point.
Conflective of their child.
Yeah, good point. We added specials and Spanish um to the progress report to meet the need that parents were feeling like they didn't know what was happening or how their student was performing in specials. So, you know, we went from nothing to something and now we can continue to refine that. But um I just appreciated the comments that will help us move forward with that. Um, and then the next one was, I like I like this question. It was actually suggested by a community member. Um, they said, we would love to share some ideas around maybe what events could happen here at Ray. Would you think about putting this on the survey? Like, what a great idea because we do hear that people want to be in the school and they're not sure how to do that or they'd like more ability to. So in terms of events, um, the things that people suggested, you know, concerts, coffee hours, um dances, just general community and social events, appreciation of the things that we already do, like the Japanese cultural showcase, open houses, the literacy night, the future ready fair, the send-off, um, the ice slides, uh the walk to school days, um, the that we are bringing back the string and band concert. That was such a lovely event that we recently had. Um, a suggestion around outdoor movies or concerts, um, just continuing to have opportunities to come in and volunteer and then maybe even a field day that involved families coming in, even if it wasn't local school, because there'd be a lot of people and no parking. But field days within a grade level where families could come together. Um, and it was lovely to, you know, come up to the school this evening for this board meeting and see an ice cream social happening outside of one of our kindergarten classrooms. So um just people want more events, more ability to connect, to be able to hang out, to meet each other. Um, because yes, when you start as a family in kindergarten, um, you kind of build a community within the grade level of other parents. And then when other folks join, that community just keeps growing. So it's ways to connect. Questions about events?
Wishing they hadn't lost. I'm just, I'm wondering, now that we've asked and gotten those responses, what's the appropriate, you know, um, next step? So that people feel like they're heard?
Yes. Um, so specifically, you know, things like the Halloween parade as well as colonial days were things that were mentioned. Um, and at this point, yeah, please send out a survey this year about Halloween to try to understand where the community felt, you know, the positives and the challenges were. Um, and we made a decision based on that and we're gonna continue to maintain that decision. But the Hal- the Halloween parade is not something that we're gonna have back on the table, but thinking about what we can do that is, that meets those needs is the most important thing. So it may not be the Halloween parade, but it could be something that we do seasonally that makes sense and meet that need. Um, and then uh tying into just making sure that at the appropriate time, we're doing the documentation around our social studies curriculum. I would say that that would be the time that you would be thinking about what makes the most sense in terms of uh bringing back something like colonial days in a way that is culturally responsive.
All right, so for the Halloween, love seemed to also mention sing-along, which is a lot, which I love, right? So so I'm wondering if there are an opportunity to do an annual sing-along event at the Ray School, which involves parents rather than a weekly sort of more holders and a piece of that.
That was interesting. Before like, I love sing-along, but it was way too much.
Comments, but it came up a lot. The Halloween parade seems to come up a lot. Yeah, so I wonder if there's a way to have a day or not a weekly, you know, so you're still a respondent? And maybe some folks would appreciate that.
Any other questions for Lauren or anything else from the board members or the public? Thank you so much, Lauren.
And then just generally appreciations, constructive feedback. I'll roll through those pretty quickly. So those are like the catchalls. So some stuff was um just reiterated in the last sections around, you know, any anything else you want to share with us? Um, and appreciations, there were appreciations around um us being able to intervene and monitor social interactions, provide social support from our school counselors, um, to support learning and social development. Lots of appreciations around specific teachers or grade levels, appreciation for how welcoming, joyful the school is, how their students have well-rounded experiences, appreciations for strings, band and specials, appreciation for children being able to find friends and make friends here at the Ray School and find a sense of belonging and feel cared for, as well as um just general appreciation for general support and the social emotional learning focus that we have. In the area of constructive feedback beyond things that we've already talked about, um, there were there were more appreciations in the constructive feedback section, which was lovely. Um, just a follow, follow, some follow-up around volunteering. So um, people sharing that it felt difficult to get onto the volunteer list, um, that the process seemed really challenging. So something for us to consider. Um, there was a lot of feedback around lunch, so let's come back to that in just a second. Feedback around, constructive feedback around um curriculum, making sure that the documentation is happening, requests for it to be happening quicker, which we've kind of addressed in previous meetings, um, and in our strategic plan, particularly areas of history and science. Um, again, sort of the echo, just the desire for more communication from me, from the administration. Um, a comment for around parking lot safety, but let's return to to lunches. So there were quite a few pieces of feedback and I actually already shared this feedback with our um cafe folks um around um healthier options. And um, so we're gonna be seeing what we can do within the constraints that we have budget-wise and and figure out how we can meet that need too. I'm not really sure what the answer is there. And speaking to our cafe folks, um, they're not sure either. So the fact that this survey ended on Friday and then we got this feedback means that this is really important. It's something that we have to look into and and maybe I can have some updates for you in the fall as we kick off the lunch and breakfast program again, but I don't have the specifics around what we're gonna do differently today.
So this is an um, a question about what you're gonna do going forward, but I'm wondering historically because when my kids started at the Ray School, we had these soupers, like I want those lunches, like quinoa without a mommy. Yes, and you know, really interesting, healthy, seeming only like anybody else kind of meals. And then by fifth grade, it was hot dogs, waffles. They seemed to be coming in trays. They were not. It seemed like a distinct change. And I'm, I was not on the board at the time. I don't know if there were discussions about it, but I was wondering if there was a shift in our food supplier or.
Yes, so we shifted from the program being entirely internally run by somebody that we hired and then, you know, trusted to make all the purchasing and cooking decisions. Um, and and that really did provide some unique and amazing opportunities around food. And it was extraordinarily costly. And the point uh, a point of discussion at the end of every school year, how in the red we were in the cafe area um for for these really quite outstanding lunches. Um, so we made the decision pre-COVID, but I'm not exactly sure what the year was, Jamie and I don't remember. Okay, thank you. Twenty eighteen to, right, or nineteen?
Well, yeah, so the context of it is that, um, and we had a lot of comments in the surveys about, I feel like what it, you know, back in the day, what it used to be kind of thing is we had a, we formed a committee, which I believe was Lauren, myself, Kim and Jamie, that kind of had to take a look at what to do. And all those meals were awesome. They were, we were very, very wary and red and we did change suppliers.
I I'm sorry, this is not just my memory of this. And I I was the person that would bring up because we needed to be net, to be neutral, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that was the pri- primary driver for why we had to switch vendors. The problem was Lauren was slaying hash because we couldn't internally source.
I hadn't gotten there. Yeah, I haven't gotten there. I wasn't done.
That was, I mean, that was, we we didn't have staff. It was really hard to up to maintain a reliable staffing and we needed to deliver food. I mean, that was critical number one. I mean, I think at most we were like sixty-four thousand dollars, which on a budget of fifteen, you know, we can discuss if we're talking about, you know, nutrition and those kinds of trade-offs. I think that the primary thing was we needed staffing. Um, and it just was not reliable to do it internally. We had lots of discussions about how do we do this, you know, uh, you know, with healthy and local options. And and that's why we talked about what is the right price because you have to pay, you know, pay to play, right? To get a lot of robust, robust options. So, you know, again, still bringing up what price to give her what options and that kind of a thing. So I I I don't want to discount the uh like, and really, when you look at school lunch providers, there's two, right? And there's really just one when you kind of look at it and we we looked at it, right? And so, you know, I I think we can, we can ask for more than we we can clearly, we can clearly look into it. But I also think that that involves probably a price trade-off because how they are supposed to, our provider is supposed to run it is basically to try to be, you know, just be cost neutral. Um, and, you know, the price of food since twenty nineteen has skyrocketed, as we know, with, you know, inflation, we really go to grocery store. So I think maybe what some of these trade-offs and guessing, total guess is that, you know, we haven't really significantly changed our 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 price per meal that much, but costs have increased. And so I think you're just seeing this constant mindset of that. So, you know, I, that's how I remember it, right? And so, I mean, I I don't think it was really like, oh, we're trying to pinch pennies here. I think you were trying to run a program that's revenue, you know, and and net zero, right? But but we needed to have staffing and this was a way that what we haven't heard in the last five or six years, we haven't heard that Lauren's. We haven't heard that Lauren's staff, they are serving lunches because even having the hassle of third party that has had reliable staffing. So.
I'm not exactly sure what it means though. Yeah, so there, there was a, there was a cost piece of it. There was um, a staffing piece of it and, and just like the, the personnel piece of it. So then I was in charge of, of trying to hire people who would come in and do the thing. So the, the person who um originally was in charge of, or when I got here, was originally in charge of the Ray Cafe retired. And that created a big suck right there where um we were trying to find somebody else who was just as fabulous as she. Um, and continue to run the program internally. That, that didn't work. We couldn't find the staffing. We couldn't find the person. There was a lot of interpersonal issues. And not only was I serving and, you know, cooking and doing things behind the scenes, but I was managing a lot of like um, conflict as well. Uh, and so then we had the opportunity to take a look at the same group that um was being utilized at, at least at the middle school to see if that, that would be something that would make sense and solve some of. Our problems in high school too much. Yeah. Um, so we went out to bid. We, we, the committee, um.
Sorry, high school was already using.
And I think with the middle school was as well.
There's still internally sourced. I think it's also some of the comparative, right? So if they go from here, you know, and they have two sets of kids, right? They have different food experience.
Um, so ultimately after going out to bid and having this day where we got to eat a lot of food and meet the folks that own each of the companies, um, you know, we went with uh Fresh Picks. And this year, you may have remembered, there was one update that I gave that um Fresh, Fresh Picks was actually purchased by another parent company. And that has changed what we've seen for the remainder of the year in a way that's more significant than we thought. So that is something that we will have to consider moving forward, whether this can be the right company, the right modality, the right price point, the right options. But what I can say is that um, the feedback that I've received for the people in the Ray Cafe. The interpersonal is incredible. Kids and staff alike feel welcome and um, feel happy to go through there. You know, don't, we've had situations in the past where a student will spill a tray and be too afraid to go back to the cafe to get a new tray because of who was staffing it. Like kids love to go there, love the people there, staff love the people there. And they have put in place some incredible processes and systems. To get students in and out. It's the same foods. It's not the food that took the shortcut, but they have these amazing process with cards to get kids in and out and back to class so that they have the time that they need. That was another major issue is the backup that we were having, like all the way down to the multi, this lunch line would be all the way down because it was just so slow. So the, the people in there have done an incredible job, which is, I think a lot of the data, so we can work on the food section of it. That's it. I'm done. That's why I've seen my time. Thank you, everyone. There's a lot there.
Any more questions on the new survey for Lauren from board members or the public? So I think very much that you've gone long for your appreciation. I'm now going to move on to business requiring action. If you uh refresh.
I have one question about volunteering, because you had mentioned about it. So I just, I, I do kind of want to make sure we are executing the volunteer policy at the Ray School. The way it was intended and the comments of parents find my real card because. I, I have an inclination that maybe they're being registered as a designated volunteer versus just a volunteer. Cause I think this is when I, we were on the policy committee together, right? You know, we talked about, you know, we didn't want to make a high hurdle just to have that parent who comes and helps a classroom and. You know, they won't be alone with a student, you know, kind of thing. But um, you know, I don't know if, if anybody else did, but you know, I got like, you know, sexual harassment training. Requirements, um, you know, that kind of thing to be, you know, a, a parent that helped with, you know, like a gender run house. That never left as long as the student. So I just, I, I wanted to make sure that because we had defined that there was a difference between a designated volunteer and then kind of that. Went off volunteering, he tipped us that. And if, if, if folks are falling into that designated erroneously, I'm concerned that we're losing volunteers.
Yeah, I would maybe propose that that be a discussion point at one of our board meetings because um, yes, you are correct. We are calling people designated volunteers.
Right. And that was, the intention was to have a distinction.
Okay. And our, our intention um here, and I believe it aligns with the other elementary school with Marion Cross is that. We feel that at any given point, even though you don't think you're going to be alone with a student. Our students are like five years old at youngest, sometimes four when they first come to us in kindergarten until September thirtieth. Um, and we have an obligation to make sure that the people that we're bringing in are people that we um know and trust. And if there's a situation where they happen to be alone with a student, even if they didn't realize or think that they were going to, that we have done what we can to um. Make sure that the volunteers are in a position where they could do something like that. So uh, if we would like to change how that is being executed at the Ray School, I would welcome that conversation. Because we really do just want to do what's right for students, but we also want to have people in the building. So we have to find a way to make both of those things happen.
Right. Yeah. And it's alone as a student and on a consistent faith, like there are like multiple steps to be considered a designated volunteer, which is also, I think, like a legal definition, you know? Because RSA is referred to be designated volunteer, which is just regular volunteer. So I just want to make sure we're, and if the feedback is we need to merge the two, then we'll.
Sure, sure. And yes, and that would just be, I'd have a, I'd love to have a conversation with my colleague at the other elementary school too.
And I agree. That's a, that's a separate conversation.
Yes.
Um, and so Kim, this came up at policy about a year ago in terms of the, the intent versus what it has become. And I agree with Lauren that that should be a separate conversation that I can talk about.
That's fine. I think I was just putting context to the parent survey data.
Yes. And when we come from a place too, where it used to be, you didn't have to, you didn't have to think about this. There wasn't even a designated or, there wasn't even. Um, categories of volunteers, right? Like you could say that you want to be a volunteer tomorrow and I wouldn't know that you're coming, you know, administration wouldn't know that you're coming, but the classroom teacher would. And that was, that was great. So we went from sort of a free-for-all, which is really nice in a lot of ways. People could just come and go. And that was, that was really nice. But now there are other things that we have to follow and abide by and um make sense of. So we'll just keep trying to make sense of that.
Great. Okay. Yeah.
Um, only because the resolution that was uploaded has schooling in it. I would like to simply.
As, as.
Say as amended at the Dresden meeting. And I can read it again because I found my page, but.
Um, so Deb's getting quietly excited. If you refresh your screens, you'll see the resolution's been added to business requiring action. Um, but it is a separate uh approval. It's not part of the consent. So as we strip over the business firing action, I would love to hear a motion for items.
I move to approve items B through E by consent.
And we do not have any board members, so I can take a second. Second by Tony. All those in favor? It is unanimous, six zero. I'll point out that Tony McConnell is not with us. And then Deb, you want to talk just through the resolution uh, three places we've all heard elements of it before?
Um, I think Paula and Tara heard it at our Dresden meeting where we agreed to the wording. After it was tweaked in the last, in the resolution part for submission to the New Hampshire School Board Association for the Fall Meeting. And the deadline is August one. Um, and they've actually opened the submission period already. So this is easy enough to do. But the language in the board docs says, therefore being resolved that the New Hampshire School Board Association supports and advocates for statewide legislation. And local school board policy that affirms the rights of all students to. And at this point, we edited it in the Dresden meeting, so it should go on to say, participate in education, including school-sponsored. Curricular and co-curricular activities for free of discrimination on the basis of gender identity. So it, it's slightly tweaked. We passed that unanimously at Dresden. So my proposal is that we simply do it for Hannover as well.
Anyone have any comments on the resolution as with the amended language? See, I'll be talking about the motion on.
Uh, I move to approve the, oh, it's right. You didn't call me.
I did call you, finally.
I move to approve the New Hampshire School Board Association resolution as amended.
Anyone want to second that? Seconded by Tara. All of those in favor? It is unanimous against six zero. Thank you, everyone. Moving right along to communications and reports. I have nothing to report except for it's been a great deal with everyone. I look forward to the next one and enjoy your summer. I'll try not to bother you. I cannot find stuff. I believe we have, uh, do we have any catchall updates on committees? Uh, Kim, Tony, Deb, any updates on NHSBA, what we already talked about? Hannover finance or town capital improvement?
Yeah. So the town capital and the Mickey money, um, essentially like reconvened and then to, to uh, basically split for the summer and then come back. So I think the, the work will be uh starting back up in the fall or in the, let's sorry, I should say like late July, August, but kind of more into the.
Second one I logged is super intentional for it. What's happening, Dan?
Okay, I have attached my report in written form to your review. Uh, I, I will repeat what I mentioned um when this bum gardener was here earlier. It was really cool. Nan brought over the, the team. Um, from the fifth grade here at the Ray School to advocate again for solar power in the roots. And uh, it, it was, it was really a great event. It was thrown by the high school environmental foul, but. Um, all year I've been telling them about the wonderful kids at the Ray School who are really motivated around issues of environmental sustainability. And then same thing at Marion Cross. They're all doing different projects. But they came together and they each had a chance to present and then they had a great pizza party and brainstorming session and then topped it off with ice cream. So it was really neat to see student, students engage in, in both the signs. And the um, the active, the activism to help us do a better job as steward of the environment. So it was really, it was great. And, and they are going to carry on their work. The, the group um. That was uh spearheaded by our friend Ara, who presented to the board, uh, along with some of his colleagues, um, are moving on to sixth grade where. They don't have an environmental club at the middle school. So yeah, I, I got that committed to, um, they're going to take their club and keep it going and they're taking it to our environment. Uh, so we'll have, we'll have a club and a climate action plan in each of the schools. So that was, that was uh really uh. Like a really uh, not just interesting, but it was, it was kind of heartwarming. It was just neat to see them all working, working together and the little kids. Look up so much to the high school students, but I was in the back with uh some of the high school students when the elementary kids were presenting. And their depth of knowledge of the science behind climate change was really, really impressive to the point where the kid, the high school kids are like, we don't even need to present there, you know? It was, it was cool. Um, so in addition to that, I just happened to receive today my issue of. The district administration, one hundred top influence influencers in education. I just decided to page to see if I knew anybody. And I noticed that Lauren Rimp, who was uh at one point, one of your colleagues on the Dresden board. From Norwich, uh, was identified as one of those one hundred most influential educators. So I thought that was going to be, yay us, yay Lauren. So that's my report.
So although in terms of the thing about uh what Norwich School Board is up to for the free or reduced tuition, if you can let us know how that goes. Um, the next time we, next time we meet after that meeting, I think we'd all be curious to get into the discussion.
Would you like to, you want to explain that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so. We were approached early on in the negotiation process, um, before we even had met with the Norwich Teachers Association. To think about whether or not we would want to um include the negotiation of, of employees being able to bring their, their children to our school if they're not residents. And at that time, we decided it wasn't appropriate to bring any negotiations. There were too many unanswered questions and we didn't know what the potential downfalls would be for that. Um, that was long before. Hiring became as much of a consideration as it is in retention of employees. And so in, in Norwich recently, we were asked to consider this again. So the board started that conversation about it. They have now tasked me with going back to them and with recommendations by the August board. Uh, they lost several um of their newer staff members who had opportunities to um work in, in a school where they could bring their kids. So helping with both childcare and, and just a craziness of morning needs, having different schedules, having snow days, whatever it is. Makes that very attractive for some folks. So I'm doing that research for Norwich. Um, one of the considerations we have in Norwich is that, well, then what happens? They get to sixth grade, they finish them, then there's no such. Effort underway on, on part of Dresden with Hannover. So what are we going to do? Um, so it, it'll be probably a more urgent concern if Norwich does something for Dresden. But I, I would defer to Lauren. I mean, we're, we're now looking at Lebanon, who's just finished the second read of a similar policy. And are implementing that policy in Lebanon, which puts us, I think, at a competitive disadvantage when, um, when we're recruiting. So it's just something for you to, I just wanted to put it on your radar because I will be doing that research totally with Tara.
Would you research include surveying the staff about how many would, would they?
Right. Want to know what our potential, if we did offer that benefit. What I'm seeing everywhere, I've talked to several districts already and read the Lebanon policy and several others. That um, they put caps on it. Basically the, the, the limit is if, we'll do it as long as we don't have to add staff. So if you're to incur speculative or additional expenses to do it, that's usually the limitation to most of the policies for its impact. Um, and uh, that's, that's even tricky thing because what happens when you have capacity one year, but the next year your goal is to then not get to continue. So it's, there are a lot of questions I have that need to resolve. And I think one of, one of those is absolutely. A survey of staff to see who would take that, who would want it.
Can we look at the policy read at Lebanon instead in terms of free or discounted?
Free. Yep. And we can look at it as what either discounted or free or make a proposal.
And I said allowing staff, that means full-time staff?
Full-time staff.
So I, I may be misremembering, because this was during the COVID crazy era, but I believe we actually offered. As a veteran to staff or talk to them and, and no one took us up on the offer. And so uh, I don't, you know, I, I think that's just a data point to consider. Obviously it's a weird data point because of COVID. Um, and it wasn't a long-term benefit, I don't think was ever proposed, but I think that's the rationale of it, you know, if we close the school, you know? Kind of having similar schedules. I think that was kind of the idea, but.
That's a, that's a, that's a great point. And I think what has changed since then, certainly in Norwich, is that the, the staff turnover. Has, has left the school with a, a teaching staff and a support staff that are, are younger. And they're in that period of life when they're having kids that are attending school age. And so that's, it's getting them out of probably more than it is in certain places. But at that time, we, if you remember, we shed like over forty positions in that last year. So I think that's. Is that we've got more families. And Lauren, I don't know, what are your thoughts here at your school? Are there people in that situation?
Yeah. So I mean, there, there may be currently folks. It's hard to say because it, um. I think it's hard to, most folks would say it's hard to like remove your child from their current peer group in order to bring them here. I'm thinking of it more as a recruitment strategy too. So there might be people, I have not done a survey. There might be people currently who would have their student come in district. And um, and yeah, take advantage of, of that benefit in a positive way. But I'm thinking, you know, when I'm trying to recruit folks and try to speak about the things that set the race apart, um, that would be a huge one.
For Norwich particularly, did this um factor into their practice for state funding if their enrollment would increase because of this policy?
There are different considerations based on um whether or not students are counted in your ADM or your headcount. Um, if they transfer in that way. And so I don't have all those differences researched yet, but I will be. I, I do think there, in, in Vermont, it's, it actually hurts. It hurts the sending school. Yeah, I believe in, in Vermont, they lose that ADM. And I believe in New Hampshire, we still get credit for our students who are somewhere else.
Just wondering for the larger budgetary picture, which includes, you know, both districts, that if that were improved in anything.
Financially. Yeah, that's the financial impact will have to be one of my elements going on.
I would just want to add that what I do hear from current employees and what I experience from current employees is the challenges that having different school breaks, snow days versus not snow days. Conferences versus not conference days, in-service days, that, that, that tends to be really challenging. And so we're trying to find ways internally to keep teachers in front of their students while also supporting them as parents. But oftentimes we'll see that a teacher will have to take off a day because their, their child has a snow day, we're in session and they're scrambling to find a sub on that day. So those would be considerations for individuals to make when, you know, making a decision, should this be something that they could elect to do? I'm not sure that they would take it, but I know that in the different school schedule, the snow days do provide challenges currently to, to staffing.
Yeah, Robin, you ready for your report?
Yes, I've submitted my report and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Same one. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate you giving great the format. And then we'll move right along to, we'll see there's some, there's some hires in the non-public session. And you'll know there are some familiar faces if they look there, they are familiar. Does anyone have a need to go into non-public based on the, your own view? Have reasons for us to worry about public? Lauren? I will ask, what is the difference between academic interventionist and learning specialist?
Many things. So an academic interventionist is somebody who's part of like, the support on a more targeted level, but not special education. So it's at other schools, it might be something called a tutor, but it's really targeted intervention in subject areas like reading, writing, as well as math. An interventionist is outside of the union. So it's a position, it's an hourly position, it's a non-benefited position. And there's flexibility around scheduling too. So we tend to have interventionists that are more part-time, so come in three days a week to see their targeted intervention groups. Those groups are groups of students that have been identified based on data. They could be some targeted, yeah, some targeted intervention and instruction. And so the interventionist delivers that instruction, meets with small groups of students outside of the realm of special education. And the position is not, is outside the collective agreement agreement.
Any other questions you're going to feel in need of on the public? Okay, great. In that case, we will skip right ahead to the public session for returning, for approving new hires. Anyone provide a motion for that?
I move to approve hiring Chloe Vocal as a one one oh FTE elementary teacher, Tara Stone as a one one oh FTE one specialist, and Stephanie Harold as a one one oh FTE instructional coach as a representative.
Seconded by Kim. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous six zero. Thank you, everyone. Would any member of the public like to adjust the board on any issues not discussed already tonight? Being done, we'll move right along to agenda items in the next meeting. Send me them if you have one. Like I said, we're trying not to have any summer meetings until Wednesday, August twenty first. So I will try to hold to that if I can. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Happy summer. Anyone want to adjourn?
Well, I, I realized that in Dresden, we, we had a motion that would basically allow the ministry. Oh, did I miss that? Yes. Sorry, I was scrolled down. Okay, thank you. I remembered. Okay, thank you, sir.
I move to adjourn meeting at eight fifteen PM.
Seconded by Tony. We do it individually for this one, starting with Tony.
Very, yes. Nelson, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Tina, yes.
Lazi, yes.
Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned. Happy summer.
Okay, please don't leave without signing the manifest.